Like I said, Tajee Chastman, He-Him, co-chair of PSEP.
Elliot Young, He-Him, other co-chair of PSEP, and I will pass it to Amy.
Sorry, I don't have a rapid finger button. Hi, I'm Amy Henderson, Chair of the Behavioral Health Subcommittee.
And next, maybe Claudia.
Hi, welcome everyone. My name is Claudia. I am the project assistant for PSEP. Thanks for being here this evening.
And Judith.
Hi, everybody. I'm Judith Maury, and I worked at Specity and Human Rights and helped support the staffing of the PSEP.
Barbara.
Barbara Boschinsky, Portland Cop Watch. She/her?
Sean.
John Campbell, He-Him, Chair of the Training Advisory Council.
And Leah.
Hi, everyone. Leah Drebin, community member, interested in this work.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Barb.
Hi, I'm Barb Reinisch. I'm a Peer Support Specialist and a community member and a PSEP groupie.
Sam. MD is Mayor's Office, He-Him is. Asena.
Hi, everyone. Asena Lawrence. I work in the Mayor's Office. My pronouns are she/her. Thank you.
Pamela. Is that you, Joanna? Joanna.
Okay, hi. I'm Joanna Brenner. My pronouns are she/her, and I work with the Portland Metro People's Coalition.
And Pamela Fitzsimmons. And that's her if they're there. Nathan Castle.
Hi, I'm just here as a community member, looking to observe and learn more.
Right.
Awesome. So, just a quick background for folks who may be new. This court patrol work session is, I believe, now the third or fourth we've had. Throughout the process, we have made this open for the community to watch as we are crafting recommendations that will influence the court patrol services and the normal functions of PPB, along with alternatives to the court patrols functions, as well as some other key areas that we wanted to focus on. And so through that process, we have now, I believe, developed, I want to say like, not 12, that sounds too many, but I think there's a decent amount, about 10 to 12, something like that. Sounds about right. Different sections of recommendations. And so that first document I sent was a background document. But I think we're going to look tonight at the survey. And so this survey will, well, we'll look at both. But the survey initially is the document we'll be sending out to the community, which provides them with light detail around the recommendations and allows them to then say if they support it on a scale of one to seven. One, I believe, being least supportive and seven being most supportive. And so that has been crafted on Google Forms, so we'll take a look at that in a second, and then we'll, after that, take a look at the background document. So if you have any questions about like what those recommendations mean in more detail, hold those questions. We're about to go to the background document. After that, we'll take a look at that document, which lays out in more detail each of the recommendations and the different things that they'll affect, along with a problem statement we wrote, sort of explaining and articulating the reason why we decided to put forward this specific set of recommendations in particular. So without further ado, we can just jump right into it. We'll review, and basically, we already did the heavy lifting of drafting it. And now we really would love all feedback that you all could contribute. The form for the survey will hopefully be out tomorrow, today or tomorrow, meaning that we'll push it out on large our channels and try to get it out to different community organizations. And we can hopefully get feedback over the next month, as Elliot or Sam mentioned earlier. Is there any initial questions before we go into the survey? About like past processes or anything? Well, at the end, we'll talk a little bit about where we're going to go after today. So we'll make sure to get that answered for folks. Okay, great.
And just to say that, you know, these recommendations were developed out of the MAP app and out of conversations by the community. And what we've done in the intervening time is basically try to put them in a form that's easily digestible, that has enough background context. And then what the survey does is try to abstract from the recommendations to succinct questions that could be asked of the community. So this is really the work that Tajee and I and Sean and other people have done is basically just to try to encapsulate what was commented on by the community.
And then, yeah, I'm going to just shave all the other stuff, but what's happening up. And yeah, thanks. Thank you, Sean, and for answering that question. MAP app in a little more detail is the, it's a site that the city usually uses for zoning that's being done, and they'll do testimony on there. It's also able to be used for other things. So we had a chance initially to show people what court patrol currently looks like and had them be able to comment on that. And we received around 250 comments or testimony, varying lengths, and we back that up and still as Elliot described. So, cool. Any other questions before hopping into the survey? Claudia, would you be okay sharing your screen to get that up? Because, gosh, when I do it, I, whole computer breaks or just starts fans very loud.
Am I showing the draft survey or the link that I?
Um, you can do that. You can click the draft survey, and you can click the little eye in the top right corner, and it'll show it as if it's the public. So it looks less, too much stuff on the screen when it's in the editing mode, usually. But if there's any edits to make, I also have it up so I can make edits while we talk.
All right. I have a lot of windows open. Okay, here we go.
Okay. Um, okay, cool. So this, so this is, there's, I want to just quickly preface that there's a couple of reasons we decided to use Google Forms over just MAP app again. The most important one is that everyone's responses will be unable to be seen until the end. And then we'll have the opportunity for people to see what other people thought about the recommendations as they exist. And we'll talk more about what happens after that. But we really wanted to use Google Forms because it also allows us to do this one-to-seven scale thing. And so here's a little background information, and I'll piece up in what we're doing. And then it goes right into demographic questions, and we really want to be able to do this for the reason described here. But it just helps us understand more of, you know, who is answering and why to specific things. So could you go to the current options available? They may be updated from what I was just hearing. They may be updated if we did forget or didn't include a specific demographic, and we aren't asking for, I think we have, yeah, that, yeah, I'll just let people look at it. And so we'll just go through it. And then if there's any questions throughout, please feel free to like raise the hand feature or just talk. So then we also have here now the option to say what part of Portland you're in, or even if you're outside of Portland.
Could I just ask, Sam, because on the demographics, Claudia, could you go back to the demographics? So, Sam, what changed from, it's not clear to me, what changed?
Can you go, Claudia? Can you, it's the language at the beginning, there's a box now. So, yep, and go up, scroll up one more. Sorry. It's a header. There, demographics questions. So it's why we're asking for this information and that this is the, it's more of a confidentiality.
Oh, so the categories you didn't change, you just?
No, it's just that, it's, it's, it's explaining why PSEP is asking for this.
Right. Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Oh, thank you, Joanna, for asking that question. We, yeah, we, so we didn't ask general gender questions. I think we were asking for folks who existed onto the, to the, I guess, like marginalized, most marginalized within the gender identity. And so that's why we put like non-binary or gender queer or like person.
I understand that. I just didn't see gender as something that you could check. It's just if you're gender queer or non-binary. So it doesn't say, are you male or female as a?
Right.
But I don't know, I don't care, but I'm just noticing that usually people do both. But I just wanted to know if it was a conscious choice or not.
PSEP strictly does not believe in gender as a construct.
Good. I'm so glad you hear that.
No.
We also don't believe in race as a construct.
Yes, yes. So we'll put, we'll add male and female as options, I guess. No. And I think, no, I do think it's a valuable asset as well. Obviously, it's going to be a larger population, and it would be interesting to know just generally. But like I was saying, it was just the way we were thinking about it at the time was not to just put all of the ones we could think.
The other issue about when we get these responses, you could check more than one, obviously, on this kind of thing. And so it's going to be, we can't say like, you know, 20% of the respondents were, well, it's going to add up to more than 100% is what I'm saying.
So we might want to, that might be something we want to do is like split up. It makes it a little more difficult, but maybe doing like the main two and then the rest of them in a separate one, so that we have two different pie charts to look at. Because I think having a race and gender, one, and then having one with the, if you're houseless, if you're an immigrant, like those ones, like, would that be? Obviously, house is an immigrant, not the same thing, but it would then be able to look at in two different ways instead of one huge chart. But Barbara, sorry, you also had a question. I don't want to.
Oh, yeah. Just about the gender, I understand that some people are non-binary or, you know, whatever. And, and, but there's a very big reality about how women are treated in this world and in, in terms of even crimes and stuff. So it seems like, it's kind of like saying, oh, we're in a post-gender world when we're not really.
Oh, no, I was, I was just, I was just being satirical. I'm sorry. I was not, I was not mean. We definitely want to include female, male and female on it. Initially, we were, had a different communication in our head going for it, but makes much more sense to put gender, of course. We were just, I was making a little joke, sorry.
Okay. I just didn't get it.
No, no, no problem. It was, it was very not, big joke. Barb, yeah.
So I'm wondering, just a suggestion, if you want to add like formerly houseless or experience with, direct experience with houselessness or something? Because that, I think it is going to be a big difference between somebody who's never been homeless and somebody who has been but no longer is. Just a thought.
I like that idea, and I.
They're dead bobbing, guys.
And, and I like the, you know, for similarly with mental health or behavioral health, however we termed it, that it could be experienced with. And maybe given these, all these new categories, we could split up the demographic questions into race and ethnicity being one question, and then do a gender question, and then do, you know, that other question, which would include those other, other categories, but just to separate out.
Yeah, that would, we won't just say other, we'll say like marginal, yeah, just like other marginalized communities that you may represent in a separate one, just because they all have less differences than race and gender would have. That makes sense. And so Barb, yeah, let's also, we'll add in that for that section as well. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, any other questions or comments or suggestions for the demographic section? Well, if you have any later, no problem. So now to just get into the recommendations, like I said before, separated by seven different categories. The first one is the Behavioral Health Unit. So I'll read the description for folks. The Behavioral Health Unit of the Portland Police Bureau focuses on responding to issues related to individuals experiencing a mental health crisis. It includes the Enhanced Crisis Intervention Team. Patrol officers trained specifically to handle such calls, behavioral health response calls, a patrol officer and mental health professional which works proactively with the individuals identified as having multiple or high-risk contract contacts with police. And the Service Coordination Team, which coordinates resources for individuals who are chronically in and out of the criminal justice system. And so then, after that is the question that we lay out, which is, PSEP is considering recommending the city ensure the Behavioral Health Unit remains fully funded and maintained. And then it's a one-through-seven scale. And so similarly with the rest of them. But I will just continue to work on an impression. No one has any thoughts until we raise it, or Elliot, you already have one. Let's go.
I don't know. Barb, is that your hand? Was that an earlier hand?
I assumed it was, okay, yeah.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, I mean, this is a small thing, but Sam, if you're taking down all these edits, S, it should be SCT, not SRT, Service Coordination Team.
Yeah, you got that. Okay. Um, okay, so I'll just keep going. But if anyone like is looking at it as well, and it comes back to one, like, we don't have to, if you have a comment on any of them, if you're looking at them, go ahead. But I'll just read them for everyone's sake. So the second one is on Enhanced Crisis Intervention Training, which is something I believe all of the members of BHU have, correct? Yeah. Want to say? Oh, did someone, sorry, Joanna, give your hand up? Okay, Barb, sorry. I will not say that. That's not.
Do you want to do it or I'll do it? All the officers have 40 hours of crisis intervention training. That's CIT. And then there's a group of officers which are part of the Enhanced Crisis Intervention Team, which is what ECIT stands for, who are voluntarily heavily vetted and then have an additional 40 hours of training. And those guys are the ECIT. Does that make sense?
Sorry, I get them mixed up sometimes, sorry.
I've had a lot of practice, Tajee.
Thank you for the description and clarifying for that. Joanna, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was just, I guess, wondering when we're going to talk about the content of these? Because personally, I think that this is a little bit confusing for people. If I were trying to do this survey, I understand that people can go to the, there's a link that people will be able to go to get more information. But, you know, I guess, I guess I'm just curious about this. Because you, you say you're thinking of doing this, but there's no real rationale. Like you say, something like, we, we think we need to continue this for a reason, but you don't say why. So, so I just feel like for people who are going to have the same problem, maybe with the MAP app, where people get these questions, but they don't actually read the survey. Remember, they didn't really read it. And I just, I'm just a little bit concerned is all. That's, you know.
So where we do that is in the background document. So would you, the, the issue was if we put all of that in, would it be like, just look daunting for someone, like they've got to read through a 14-page document to answer? But I, so I share your concern. I kind of think to really answer these things, you need to first go through that document to understand it. And then these are just the questions. So do you think we should just basically cut and paste what we have in that background document into the survey?
They're kind of long, though, right? Those, those things are really long. So I'm just wondering if, I just noticed in this one, because I had a question about it. I just noticed in the background document, you say, there's no, there's no good reason to get rid of this unit, or we think this unit needs to continue, police are going to have to be called. But then you don't kind of say why. So that was really my question, as someone who's thinking, I'm thinking about this as I read it, as how would I hear this? Or how would I answer it? So?
Yeah, no. So I definitely understand what you're saying, Joanna, and I think that there is a simpler solution than, than having to necessarily make people go look at the document. I think that we could just change the language instead of just giving a description of the program, just also including the problem statements we use. Because I think those articulate why we are asking to expand or keep a program. So, I mean, I could just give you the example of like this specific section of, of the Behavioral Health Unit is just like one of the other things that we're advocating for. And it does seem like one that doesn't have a lot of substantive recommendation to it. It's more of like, we support this program. But more of the ones, as we continue on, you'll see have a lot more like related to things we want to like change or move about the program. That will make a little more sense, maybe, but I think it also would benefit to put the problem statements with there. Maybe even just combining the language of the current description with a description of the problem within like two sentences, as opposed to making two separate paragraphs and making people read more. So I think we could do that. That's definitely feasible for us to just like use the two together to make it more accessible to people. Because I understand I wouldn't want to read very long things that don't make sense and then try to answer a question. So let's, yeah, let's try to get it. And there's a lot of, and if anyone wants to know about the sizes, the sizes are really off because it's very small. We're going to try to make that all bigger. So, no, we already know that one. I haven't had any comments on that. Barb, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
I wrote it in the chat for the ECIT. I would say that they come for people in mental health crisis or behavioral health crisis or some kind of crisis, not illness.
Yeah, Sam got that change.
Oh, magic. Sorry.
No problem. Okay. So, I mean, considering that problem, would it make sense for us to just try to get any more issues people might have with the survey as it exists now? I guess besides the fact that descriptions aren't good, like, aren't like what is needed for the, for anyone to look at? Like, no, we know we need to fix that. But besides that, I want to just try to make sure we can get any other feedback folks have about like doing this specific type of survey. Like, basically, we need to know if these questions are probably good as well. So I'm going to just, instead of reading descriptions, which might just be a waste of time at this point, so we're going to change them. I'm just going to read you the, what we're trying to propose in the sentence. Is that okay? I think that'll hopefully people understand. So PSEP is, so for the Enhanced Crisis Intervention Training one, which was described kindly by Barb. It's, the question is, PSEP is considering recommending the police increase the number of officers who receive enhanced crisis intervention training.
Claudia, could you?
Can you scroll down? Yeah.
So this is one of the recommendations that is, is about increasing or advocating for and the benefit of the ECIT training. So pretty straightforward there. So for the next one, it's one of the nuanced ones, I would say, is the traffic enforcement section. And so this one.
Claudia, could you scroll? Maybe it's easier if Tajee, you or I did it. I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, it's okay. So, yeah, so for this one, I don't want to read description, but just for a little bit of background, it's going to, the basis of the recommendation is the advocating for a new type of enforcement of traffic instead of PPB. And so right now, obviously, that sort of system does not exist. And so the, the basis of the question is if you would be in support of the city lobbying to have that be allowed at the state level? Because right now, even if we wanted to create a system to replace the officers for who do traffic, that's impossible with the current state policies. So that's why it's sort of phrased like this and then doesn't really include, yeah, okay, cool. So hopefully folks got that. So it's, the question is, PSEP is considering recommending the city lobby the state to allow non-police personnel handle traffic enforcement. Would you be supportive of this?
And so I would just say, Tajee, I mean, I think it's fine to ask the question that way. But in our actual recommendation, what we're recommending is the establishment of a, of a non-police force to do this in addition to the lobbying.
Well, it's more of like, do this first, do this after kind of thing, like, do one without the other. Yeah. Joanna, just a question?
Yeah, yeah, just to follow up on it with Elliot, I think it's really important and informative to say what you want to replace it with. So that sentence that Elliot said, or something more along those lines in this description, I think, would be very important. And I would actually think it could be, have a different title, like Traffic Enforcement Alternatives to Police, or something like that. Make it clear that what's being proposed here is, and say that you want, you're recommending that the city develop a, a program and, and also lobby to get it.
Right. It's a little bit of a twofer, yeah.
Yeah, it's a twofer. Exactly.
Because the lobbying is really second, I mean, it has to come first, but it's secondary. What we're recommending is that they.
Well, in some ways, we need a plan to come first because we're not going to get very far lobbying for something if you don't have the alternative in place to say to the state legislature stores, this is what we want, something like this, and we can't do it unless you change this law.
Right.
Oh, you're right. There's also, the sentence is not complete. Thank you, Barb. It's the state to allow non-police personnel to handle traffic enforcement. But we're going to change the whole question probably, so.
At least I looked this time.
Oh, you're, you're, you're much better at catching that than I am. Thank you. Okay, so the next one, Portland Response, probably doesn't need a lot of context. Most folks right now know who, what that is. But what we're advocating for is a more rapid citywide expansion of the program. And so there's a couple more detailed, exactly, things of like what, what that looks like on the background doc. We'll go over in a little bit. But that's what that one advocates for. It's a pretty straightforward one. Yeah. And then the next one is the Public Safety Support Specialist. These are sort of similar, not similar to Portland Response, since they, they work with the folks who are houseless or having mental health crises, but they are similar in the sense that they're not, they're not police sworn officers. They are specialists who are unarmed specialists working to arrest or cite individuals. And PSEP is, is considering recommending that they expand this program because currently they only have 12 officers. Yeah, to handle more dispatch calls. And I think we were also going to try to, in the background doc, it talks about connecting that to the traffic. And as an example of specialists who could handle some cases of traffic, like they have in the past, I'm pretty sure.
And just on that one, I mean, some of the complexity of this is not captured by this question because one of the parts of the, of the recommendation is to take the PS3s out of the police union, which has been a concern for some community members. But I think that it's kind of, it was hard for us to come up with a simplified question. Or it's hard to represent all that complexity in a simplified question. And so hopefully people will go to the background document to try to understand some of that.
Honestly, I'm considering like us having, like, if we make the description smaller, making sure we include like very small, one, two, three, four of the things that are happening in the smallest of sentences, I feel like it could be possible.
Yeah, probably having our precise recommendations there would make sense.
If I can say something to that point, if you're going to put the individual recommendations, you have to start breaking them out for a question for every single recommendation.
Yeah.
Which is, at that point, you're, at that point, you're looking at a survey that's like, you know, 40 questions long. I mean, the idea behind a public survey and a general public survey is you're not expecting the general public to be experts on everything. Because 90% of these, 90% of the population probably doesn't even know half these programs exist. It's more asking very general ideas of, do you support this type of alternative? Do you support a program like this existing? If this program already exists, you support it continuing to exist? Does it sound like a general good idea?
I, do you not think we could somehow just say, like Portland Response, and it would say that similar question? But then just say like, this is what we would be recommending in like the description? Like, would we have to make it every?
If you had, if you had individual recommendations, the problem is, what if I agree with recommendation two but not recommendation four?
Can't they comment that then?
It makes it, you're trying to get into a level of detail that for a general public survey is, because then you start getting into all the little nuances of all the little recommendations of why you're trying to do them that way, and you create a survey that comes out, you'd end up having. You'd end up having to get a survey that's very long, and at that point, you're not going to get as much interaction with it because of the length.
Yeah.
It's a balancing act.
No, 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 I get that. I, yeah. Okay, um, so we probably will just have to hope people either go to the document and or make the questions enough. Uh succinctly, um, clear enough for people to respond to and understand. Like I, I understand, we've already noted the ones we've had issues with. I want to make sure we can get through the ones we have, or the rest of them, so we could look at the. Actual recommendations in detail. Um, so let me just try to get the last questions. Could you go to the next one? Claudia, thank you. So the next one's enhanced service district patrols. Um, the general idea here is that we're, we're recommending that private security patrols be removed from public spaces. And using PS3s or other programs to have uh, uh, someone controlling those areas. As opposed to private security. Um, and yeah, that's that one. And um, just the next one. Office of Violence Prevention, can you scroll down? Um, so for the office of the violence prevention, uh, we, the biggest recommendation here is that we're recommending that city increase the funding for this program. On a permanent basis. If you're keeping up with the news right now, they did just receive uh funding expansion due to the uh. Large amount of um homicides happening in Portland right now. Um, they're trying to work on preventative measures there, but it's not on permanent funding. And it's also uh, some of the nuances of what we're recommending is uh for them to move some of their, or to move programming and priorities. Towards prevention and intervention as opposed to uh, as opposed to some of the current models they're currently using. Yeah, so then the next one, if anyone has any questions throughout this, please just unmask whenever. Next one, there are sort of justice.
Can I make just one quick suggestion? I just think that the, the summary, the question should say something about, could you go back up, please? I think that rather than saying that city, you should be more specific. You're not just, for increasing the Office of Violence Prevention funding, it's for these purposes. So just to sort of something like, in order to shift resources to. Community-based programs or prevention, community-based prevention programs or something like that. Just because this just says, you're gonna, and the office could be doing a lot of things. And I think it's important to be really clear.
Okay, I think, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, and I also think if we add the problem statements.
Yeah.
It might help, but I think having it in the title, in the question itself.
And maybe we'll make the titles all like, just say in three word, whatever words, like simpler versions. So people can get big headers to see like, okay, increased funding of the office prevention, they maybe want to read more in detail about it, whatever. Um, Barbara, what's uh, what's up?
Um, I just have a question. I don't know if you have the answer for it, but. As far as that new, that program where they're putting more police on the uh, on the shootings. Did, was that at the request of the families of the victims? Or was that at, just the police decided to do that? Do you happen to know?
I don't know whose request that, that was at. I mean, I do know that the mayor had a proposal. Before, you know, the, the one that was passed to increase funding. And essentially what they ended up doing was not increasing funding, but just redirecting officers to a similar type of program.
It was based off of the recommendation of the IPAC. Right. They were the group that originally recommended it.
I can add the ordinance link um in the chat for people that would like to read the policy a little bit more.
Okay, can you remind me who IPAC is?
The inter, interfaith peace and action collaborative, sorry Elliot.
Oh, interfaith, okay, thank you.
It's Matt Hennessy and company.
Okay, awesome. Any other, okay, we'll go forward from here. So we're sort of justice, once again, another recommendation. And that does not probably have a good description to, to uh, what it does. But uh, PSEP is considering recommending that the city partner with community organizations to form a sort of justice program. That moves away from mass incarceration. Yeah, and that one has a lot of nuances to it that we can look at more later. And then the officer wellness one, could you go to the next one? Um, so for officer wellness, we are, uh, PSEP is considering recommending that the city invest further. In ensuring effective wellness programs are available for police and other first responders. Um, citing the effectiveness in the descriptions, but this is probably one of the ones that have the better problem statements, uh, so to say. Next, and the final two, three, uh, data collection and transparency is all about. The city investing more in police record systems that allow for greater transparency. Um, and less you, harmful policing. Um, and so there's some descriptions of those as well. That one's pretty uh dense as well. And then the next one is uh, Boick, which is the Bureau of Emergency Communications, who handles the nine one one calls. Um, we're considered, Barbara, is your hand still up? I'm sorry.
I think it was an old hand.
If you had another question, Barbara, uh, please go for it, say it, but um, nine one one, uh, yeah, handle nine one one calls. So PSEP is considering recommending Boick increase its transparency regarding the public safety calls it receives. Um, the protocols it uses that limits the unneeded or inefficient use of public safety resources. And the effective, the effective frequent callers on system. Um, would you be supportive of this? Uh, and then the final one is, or excuse me, not the final one, the final two are access to addiction and behavioral health resources. Um, is considering recommending that the city increase access to addiction and behavioral health resources. Would you be supportive of this? Um, and there's some details on how that will look as well. And then the last one is access to uh houseless services. And so PSEP is considering, um, like the last one, uh, recommending that the city increase access to unsheltered and housed as community resources.
Sam, could I ask you a question? Is this not, this is not the final version, right? This is.
And Claudia, I wonder, can you refresh it?
Because there was, um, the reason why I ask is we had had a separate question on transit. And then there was also this discussion of moving those links. You know, to the end, so I don't know if what we're looking at is what you worked on, or if we're looking at an older version.
Yeah, Claudia, can you, I wonder if you can. Scroll down. It should be a live document. Um, the references should be on, all should be on the bottom, so that's why I asked to refresh. Um, and the transit.
Yeah, maybe go, um, Claudia, if you could go up to the, where this says traffic safety, okay, that fixed that. The references, go up to traffic safety and see if there's something on transit right under it. Perfect, yeah, there's no transit.
So while they work on those, I think we can now switch over to the recommendations, maybe. Is that okay? Uh, would Elliot, or excuse me, Claudia, would you be able to switch to that document? Do you have it up? Okay, you'll get that. So, um, we also put the link in the chat, I think, uh, a second ago, or eight oh six, I put it in there. Um.
And maybe, um, Claudia, do you just want to make me, um, then I could scroll through it, make me co-host?
Oh yeah, that works. I can do that. One second, um. Okay, you can go ahead and share your screen, Elliot.
Okay, I'm just trying to find background document. Okay, here it is. I'm gonna share my screen. Google Chrome. Okay, so this is, starts off, at our last meeting, Lockana raised the point. Which I think was a good point, is there wasn't enough of a context for what we're doing and why we're doing it. So this preamble basically provides that context saying. How PSEP got involved in this process, Mayor Wheeler asked us to do it, the kind of work we've been doing to get community feedback. Um, and where these recommendations come from, basically the community has given us um ideas. We have formed those into, um, into recommendations. And that these are draft recommendations that we are still working on and continuing to take feedback on. So that's the um, overall thing. And the big headings we have for these are mental health, addiction and houselessness, then gun violence. Then disproportionate policing of black and brown Portlanders, structural changes and health of police officers. And some of these categories are just one thing, but they sort of didn't fit in anything else. The next thing just says what Corps Patrol does, and the supporting documents point people to. The feedback that we've gotten at various sessions, so that they could look at what the community has already said. So, turning to the first one, and this should look familiar because we went over this last month. But what this is, is adding the problem. Which the problem basically means why we're doing this, why, why we came up with this recommendation. So the first one on Portland Street Response sort of lists out the issue of police being used to. To arrest and lots of uses of force against people who are designated as homeless. Um, as well as people in mental health crisis. And that by reducing that, um, inner, those interactions, we could hopefully reduce harm. And so the actual recommendations is to expand the program to cover the entire city. Over a five-year period, and then there's some background information with, with some links. So I guess the only new thing is this problem statement. This is like probably the centerpiece because, well, it's one of the centerpieces. Because I think most people are familiar with Portland Street Response. And so the idea of expanding it, I think is one of the major ideas. So I'll give people a moment to read what it says, and if you have any questions or comments.
So it should be trained mental health professionals.
Okay.
Not trained social workers.
Okay.
At this point.
So, um, let me pull up the document, because I've got it as a Word doc.
In my humble, um, watching of all of this.
Okay, that sounds good.
Oh. Speaking of which, the next paragraph where it says when calls to. When calls for service meet certain criteria, including the team's safety. I think there just needs to be another word in there to make that, if that makes sense. Like taking into account or balancing, you know, whatever.
Right, I'm just trying to um, open up the document so I could.
I'll make that as far as changes. Good, sorry, go ahead.
Well, because I've got a different, um.
Yeah, no, I'm on the Google Docs, so I can make the changes while things happen.
Well, the problem is I formatted it in the Word doc, so let me change it in the Word doc, or else we're gonna have to reformat it.
Okay, I'll just, uh, wait, so should I?
Just, just note it. Um, so you're saying, um, in that first paragraph there. Um, or which paragraph? Is it in the second paragraph? Yeah, um, let me find that, social worker. There it is, and trained, wha- what did you say? Call it trained mental health providers?
Yes.
Mental health providers to be first responders. Um, and the second point you're making about a sentence that's incomplete is where?
Um, the next sentence actually where it talks out about Boick, when calls for service meet certain criteria, comma, including the. Team's safety.
PSR teams are dispatched for book, when calls for service meet certain criteria. Yeah, I don't know what that means. Should we just get rid of including the team's safety?
I was saying just taking to, taking into account would be in a way you could do it, which is what.
Right, either, either way, either way.
Uh huh.
The way it is right now.
Account the team's safety, okay.
Well, can I ask what the point of that is? I mean, it, it could be clarifying or not. I'm not sure.
Okay, let me look it out, I mean.
Yeah, I think that is like.
That are gonna be used, that's, you know.
Right, so it's one of the criteria.
Yeah, it's just one, so why, why single it out?
And I would say, and further teams citywide the following year.
What line are you on?
Oh, sorry, um. The fourth line, where it says the second half of twenty twenty one. And then further teams the following year. I would say citywide or something, so that it doesn't look like it's just lengths.
Further teams the following year. Um, throughout the city.
I'm trying not to do this, but it's hard.
No, it's helpful. Um, okay. So should we move on from PSR? The, the next one is access to mental and behavioral health resources. And the problem statement is there, so I'll give people a minute to read it and see if you have.
Can you scroll up? You scroll?
Up or down? Oh wait, I'm, let me um, stop my share and share the thing I'm actually changing. Because I switched to the Word document, Microsoft Word, here we are.
This, this seems really strange to me. It's like you have two things mushed together. One is, so when I read access to mental and behavioral health resources. I'm not thinking about the kind of police who come to, to me. I'm thinking more about things like the sobering center and stuff like that. So I don't quite understand.
Yeah, so that if you look at the recommendations, number one is expansion of access to a sobering center.
Right.
Uh, oh, you're saying the other stuff is not resource.
Yeah, right. It's all about the cops, it's all about the police.
Well, so. The implication of it is that the recommendation in total is about mental and behavioral health resources. And EC, the officers that do respond to calls with folks who are having mental or behavioral health. Ill, uh, crises, or, or, or they're, you know, someone who's houseless. Like those could be responded to by folks in the behavioral health unit, or by folks who have ECIT training. And so we, and we also are just basi- it's basically like, uh, something they do a lot in legislation where they just like, say the same thing multiple times. So we're just like endorsing other parts of the recommendations.
Oh, but one, one way to address this would just change the title to mental and behavioral health responses. And then.
Yeah. Or.
Both of those issues.
But then we need to edit it still.
Okay, do you have specific edits?
Hold on. So in number two.
Mm-hmm.
You want to assist. You want to assist community members who need wraparound services, not communities. As far as like person-first language goes.
Mm hmm.
Uh, in number three, the number of officers trained as ECIT, I'm pretty.
Right, we don't want to train offices. Catch. Okay, other stuff.
This is, this was my question. Why, why is, why is, why are the police in it? Why is police involvement inevitable?
I think the idea is that. In our current system. That there will be some cases like where someone has a weapon. Where police will be called. Because the PSR is not going to be called in those kinds of cases, or if they're threatening other people. So, you know, we can imagine a future in which there are no police, but like in the world we live in right now. Even if we imagine PSR taking and other groups taking over responding to a lot of it. There are certain instances I could imagine where the police will be called.
So would it help? To say something because this could be read by people, they could have a very negative reaction, they could say. No, this is just opening the door, you know. Uh, and they'll say, no, I'm opposed to this, when maybe they would support it if they saw it as. Not that, so, you know. Instead, because the police are always saying it's inevitable that they have to be there, so. If you could think of, you don't have to do it now, but if you could think of a way to say this that makes it clear what you said, where. There's potential violence or where, you know, there's threat of violence or what whatever circumstances. You might imagine.
Circumstances when. There is a threat. Of imminent. Violence.
Yes, like, that's fine, yes.
Barbara, I see a hand.
Yeah, um. I'm wondering also if like, uh, it all sounds like kind of nine-one-one related, and I remember one time I called this, there was some kind of van where they pick up people that are. Passed out from drugs or something and they take them to a sobering center without even using.
Too bad we lost the funding for the van.
Yeah, no, it was perfect, and and see the thing.
Twenty-sixth went away and the reasoning, just in a sentence or two, is because it was designed for.
You're breaking up.
Okay, so Barbara, what was your question or?
Well, I mean, it it just seems like, uh, this, this is good, what you're doing, but it seems like what I would like to see, not only a shift away from police to. The PS3s but and and that sort of thing, but where people, if they have a family member who's in a crisis. Um, or even not even in a crisis, but having problems, and then they can have other resources like, well, the sobering center, that that van. And just other people they can call.
So I see what you mean, Barbara, like I get, I get there's like definitely a lot of things that we. Necessarily could say as, as, as mental health and behavioral health resources for folks, I mean, you could say two-on-one is another one. But are you saying like add those, which the reason we're only doing police-related ones is because like. Well, we're not even doing police-related ones, I mean, the recovery resource center would be something that then the BHU program would use, and that's the reason we kind of have. Either the, either BHU would use or PSR, that both of those programs would be utilizing these centers. And that's why the generally the language included, but also is why we generally only have. Ones that relate to, I guess, existing first responders to things as opposed to services that people could. Utilize whether or not they are in a situation that requires a first responder response. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, I'm still not.
I see what you mean, like I just don't. Could like fit, that would be unless it was used, I don't know, suggesting that there should be a new program that. Supplements the non-existent, like there, because there is, I think, one of the, actually, sorry, backing up for a second. There is a service coordination team that really does a lot of like what you're talking about, and they do like resources and casework with people similar to what PSR does, but. Um, already existing, they were cut from the budget, and so we're asking for that to be back and to exist. So those are like an example of another one that I could think of. Um, but if you do know of any besides like two-on-one that do relate to first responders, or if you know of like other city programs that like.
I don't, I don't, and I would like, I, well, I keep hearing Barb talk about the peer support system, and I'm wondering. How, um, you know, how that could be included in that, I don't know if Barb thinks that would, you know, where.
Read the email I responded to you with.
Uh, I I just got it, so I wasn't totally clear on.
So in a, just briefly. Portland Street Response right now, as part of their team in the, as team one in the pilot, has two community health workers. When they add team two, they're gonna hire two, at this point, it looks like they're gonna hire two peer support specialists.
Yeah, okay, good.
At somewhere where they fit in, but I'm not sure where else to tell you.
Well, that would be like when I, because I, the whole thing that got started was that my local grocery store now has an armed guard. And they, I asked them why, and they said it was because they had an incident where somebody wouldn't leave the store. And it was for the safety of the customers and their employees. And I'm thinking, how is a gun in the store going to help? Because if you shoot it, anybody could get hurt, right? And so, um, I was just thinking if there was a way for people to call. Like earlier before the person gets really wound up or something, like call a peer support specialist and, you know. Is is that a possibility where people like shift the focus away from calling nine-one-one even?
Well, I'm, I might be able to clarify a bit on that, technically, that is something that Portland Street Response could handle. As long as the person isn't acting in a threatening, imminently threatening way, or there's no chance of like a. Having to take someone into an involuntary hold.
Right, I'm just thinking that, um, like it sounded, I mean, they didn't give me the details, but it sounded like they had. Tried to get the person to leave and like, so like what I would like to, what I was thinking might be a good thing is the minute you see somebody, you think, oh, oh. Possible trouble here. Then call, see if you can call a peer support specialist like right away before it gets to the point where, you know. The person's resisting doing.
And then there's also. Yeah, there's, they wouldn't be what a peer specialist is for, but there's also like, I mean, the PS3 team, if it was expanded larger, could handle situations that. Aren't something super important, like soup, not important, but super like imminent threat, similar to PSR standards, like they can't respond to that stuff. But if it is in a situation like what you're talking about, people who call nine-one-one, I don't know how the PS3 teams dispatched, actually, that's what, I'm not, someone probably here knows. But like, that could be an example of like why that team should be expanded, so they can handle situations like that. That's the, yeah, that's the only one, yeah.
Okay.
It's like, I guess there's just a few programs that do exist, and I think that they all go back to nine-one-one, and I think it would be honestly better if on nine-one-one had a. Array of options to who they could refer someone to, so they don't have to go to nine-one-one, and that's what really we're working on here is PSR is nine-one-one oriented. So is, I think, is, can someone clarify if PS3s get routed similar to nine-one-one, right?
So both PSR and PS3 are routed through the emergency and a non-emergency system, so either calling nine-one-one or calling the non-emergency number. The PSR actually has a protocol through the Boick dispatchers. PS3 currently, this monitors the police lines and picks out the calls they know they can handle because it's such a limited program at this time, though. There are recommendations out already through the TAC to make that a more of a formalized thing where calls will be marked as PS3-type calls.
I think they were supposed to do that, I don't know why they.
It it takes time, I would say would be the answer to that.
And other, and if folks are interested, I just learned about this today, there's a dashboard on the Tree Response's website, and you can see all the calls they've responded to so far over the last three months. And any, the the types of calls and and what they're for, it's a pretty interactive tableau, and it's not very accessible if you don't. Um, have a lot of, you know, you just have to click through things, but very good question, um, uh.
Let's.
We're saying that, that they also expanded their territory.
Yes, they did, let's, let's move on so that we can get through this.
Yeah, sorry, we have a lot to get to.
So pup, the PS3 program is the next one, um, and here is the problem. And basically, the recommendation is to expand that program. Um, and to remove the PS3s in the police union contract.
Sorry to slow, sorry to slow it up, Elliot, I would just like to point out again, I think we need the. I think it's a little bit of a misnomer to point out public disorder calls as though all public disorder calls are the type the police shouldn't be handling. Because realistically, most of the calls that the PS3s currently handle are actually reporting crimes because of those tend to be low-level calls because it's after the fact.
We understand that, I think you made that point before, but.
Yeah, I know, it's just that.
But what we're trying to say is that many of those, if you had an expanded PS3 force. They could not only respond to reported crimes, they could also respond to many of the disorder calls, which do not involve people with. Weapons or people who are violent. So that's.
Agreed, but having that forty-seven percent, there's a much higher percentage of disorder calls that are medium and high priority, which are more likely to have officers report to them. Than crime calls, actually.
Well, we, I know, but but we've argued, we've argued this so many times.
I guess this, this statement just says like a factual statement, forty-seven percent of calls to nine-one-one involve public disorder, that's factual.
It it is, it's just kind of giving people the incorrect idea of what the PS3s will actually likely do or can do.
Well, I think that that's where the debate is about what the PS3s can and and should be doing, and I think. We're not going to resolve that here between us, and we might even disagree about it, but I I think the idea is that. We would like that investigated to see whether they could take on more of the calls than they currently do. And right now with the PSR, we found that they're actually responding to very few calls. And that that is something that also needs to be investigated, but I guess the call is. From the community is to see whether that could be expanded and pointing to that forty-seven percent of our public disorder, I think. That's a fact, what people need to know, to know that, you know, they're not responding to fifty percent. Of people with guns or knives running around, but that actually, most of these calls.
See, that's the thing with most of the disorder calls, those are actually the calls where you do see people who are armed, it's not the crime calls as much. And that's where I'm getting concerned that we are not properly informing people, we're we're misusing this statistic is I guess what I'm saying. And I agree with you, they, the PS3 could handle a lot of low-level disorder calls. But just kind of using this blanket statement is misquoting a statistic.
Well, I mean, is it true or not that forty-seven percent of calls involve public disorder?
No, I'm not arguing that, I'm just arguing that it's not necessarily something that should be. Mentioned here as specifically proof of something because it's, it's misinforming people what a disorder call actually is.
We just need to take out the percentage, Elliot, that's what he's saying, it's erroneous, it doesn't work, so we gotta take it out.
I'm sorry, I totally disagree. Um, I don't think it's erroneous, and I have not seen any evidence or analysis. Being brought forward with a fine-grained or finer-grained. Statistic on these calls, this is totally impressionistic, what you're saying, you don't have evidence. What these calls are, at least I haven't seen it, so and you haven't presented it, nor has the police department. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to go with this for now. If later on it turns out that it's not forty-seven percent, it's only thirty-seven percent. Or or twenty-five percent, it's still. Meaningful to get the police out of these calls, so this is the intent. And I don't see any justification for taking out this figure, it was provided to us by the police.
Are we able to obtain the percentage of non-violent calls?
Yes, just, just a second, I'm looking it up right now because it's on the Open Data website. Okay, police calls for service, dis- disorder calls. Approximately. Thirty-six percent of all disorder calls are high priority, meaning there is an imminent threat to either a person or high-value property.
Oh, there we go, that's what it needs to say then.
So those are, those are calls that the PS3s will never be sent to underneath the current system or likely.
Change the current system because frankly, and it's not at all clear if you say it's a weapon, look, what is dangerous? This has to be investigated, you don't know, you say that there, there's somehow danger that that, everybody's a danger as far as nine-one-one is concerned. There's almost nobody who isn't a danger, so I'm, I, um, think that, you know. You, we, and and by the way, I am really disappointed in the city and in the police bureau. For getting us to this point, and we're constantly having this debate. And nobody actually doing the kind of analysis would, that would adjudicate it, and here we are.
If, if I can make a suggestion, a more proper statistic would be forty-three percent of calls to police are low priority. And those would be ones that the PS3 could do, and that would include anything from disorder to crime to assist to anything.
Okay, well, that, that.
In there then.
That sounds like forty-three percent of calls. Are low part to nine-one-one, is it two-nine-one-one?
The, um, it's both nine-one-one and the non-emergency.
Man, it's hard to type on the fly.
I know, I never learned how to type, and non-emergency are low priority.
Here we go, now that's reality.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've cleared that up. So that. Those are the recommendations to basically increase PS3s, pull them out of the, or. Suggest they get removed from the police union contract and there's a background.
Okay, I have another comment. And. I am confused. PSR is a separate program, it's completely separate from the police. PSR might, people might at some point let the police know or find the need for police, it's sometime down the road with their doing answering a call. But PS3 officers, it seems, are part of policing and. Frankly, even though I'm totally supportive. Of repositioning the PS3s, this doesn't. It seems totally weird to me, and I'm afraid that what's gonna happen is. People are gonna respond to this, well, but that means they're coming out of the. Police, does that mean they're not gonna be in the police department anymore? If they're not in the police department, then how will they be working with the police, how will they be responding to calls, it just. I'm afraid it's going to screw up. This for people, and it's going to be confusing. And I would. Although I understand people, I understand the point of the recommendation. I would even rather see two questions, one that says, would you like to see this expanded and then. A second survey question that speaks to the, the issue of whether they're part of the police or not. Because otherwise, I'm afraid it's, I'm very much in favor of this, and I'm concerned that it will throw people off.
Because you think that people will vote against it or for it, or?
Yeah, I think people might vote against it because they're like, that, that doesn't seem like a good idea. Why would we, aren't they gonna be? Why would we, aren't they going to be addressing, what are they doing? Right now, if you look at what public safety support people do, they assist pe- police with traffic, they assist police with investigating crimes, as Sean just said. They're kind of tied in with the cops. They're not a separate program. And so that's my only concern. If people think I'm overreacting, that's fine, you can, you know, but I just.
I think it's an i- issue that we tried to address with the last sentence. We believe that the bureaucratic connection between PS3s and the PBB undermines the community's trust in them. As does their membership in the Portland Police Association. So I think if, if people read it, maybe it's clear, but I think you're right that there are like two different issues. One is expanding the PS3s and the other one is the connection to PP, you know, whether it remains within PBB, because I would change my vote depending on that second question also. So do you think, would that be a way to resolve it to everyone's satisfaction to create a second question?
Say that one more time Elliot, sorry.
So there would be one question which would be, do you, in the survey, which would be, do you want to expand PS3s? And then the second question would be, do you want PS3s to exist within the police? Or maybe phrase it, do you want PS3s to be separated bureaucratically from the Portland Police Bureau?
Elliot, shouldn't we ask people if they even know about this? Why? I, I don't know. I'm sitting here going, we're assuming that people understand all this stuff. Enough to be able to, you know, speak logically for or against. This is the first time I've ever heard of PS3s, okay? So I'm not sure how we're going to get the community to support things or not support them if they're unaware of the program in the first place.
Right. Well, that's why the background document, I mean, they need to educate themselves a little bit before being able to answer these specific questions, because you're right, if people don't know what this is, they won't be able to answer it. But this does give you a little bit of what, like in the background context, it says what the PS3s are.
Yeah, I got you. But to be able to vote on something doesn't belong with police or fire, that would require, in my opinion, a little bit more knowledge of how things play out in our community. So to me, some of these questions are kind of shortening the folks who may fill them out, limiting than the folks who may be interested in filling them out. In other words, I don't know, I just.
If I could say, that's, that's why I think Elliot's suggestion is addressing your concern, Amy. By make it two separate questions. And then if somebody says, doesn't have an opinion, they don't have to answer that question, but they can answer if they have an opinion about unarmed people doing these functions, then they could say, oh yeah, I'm for that. But I don't really know where they should be. You know, I don't have an opinion on that. So that's what Elliot is suggesting. Yeah.
Okay, so Sam, I don't know if you're, are you getting all these changes?
I am, yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving down to enhanced service district patrols. So there is the problem, there is the recommendation. Any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, Elliot, when I read the problem sentence, it doesn't, somehow it doesn't read right. Using private security removes public oversight from potentially harmful interactions with the public. I guess to me, I don't, oh, so you're saying that the company currently operating is private?
Yes.
And is that, who is that? Rapid Response or?
Like Clean, Clean and Safe.
And Safe.
Yeah.
They have multiple districts that do different things. So I found an article explaining all the differences that they do in the different areas. They have like five districts and each of their district does different things. And the ones downtown are the ones that are more involved with the public, the ones out by Lloyd Center are a different thing. So I just want everyone to know that this group manages multiple districts doing different things. So I hope that's been investigated before we just pop off with this one thing.
Well, ESDs is a general term and then there are different kinds of ESDs like you suggest. And so this is just saying for specifically for private security, for security that the idea is that it would be, it's bad to have private security patrolling public spaces because there's no oversight and accountability.
Yeah, but they say they're controlling private business walkways, you know, entrance ways. The, the big thing is, is what are they really doing? Would be the biggest question. You know, what do they really do?
Yeah, they're not just in people's shops. They're out on the public streets and, and byways. And so that's the, where the issue comes about.
All over Portland, you mean, or just downtown?
Well, there's one in the inner east side. There are one at Lloyd District. Like you said, there are different ones that have, do different kinds of things. But the uh, private security function is common to I think many of them.
So, I, I, may I interject for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanna, I don't know what we're legally allowed to do here because many of them have their own contracts.
Right.
You may have contracts with the city. So for this question, if it's okay, if I can get a copy of it, I'll probably get it from Sam or uh, one of you, but just run it by our city attorneys, because I don't know if we can if this is legally possible. And I would love for our city attorneys to let us know so that, you know, we don't waste people's time or your time.
Exactly.
But the ESDs, don't they have to be approved by the city?
They do, and their contract is up.
Not all of their contracts.
Can I just say, the clean and safe contract is up. It's being discussed. Um, and the city has to renew, decide whether or not to renew it. So, uh, including whether or not the security function will continue to operate the way it does.
So, so the clean and safe one downtown is one of our ESDs. There are multiple ESDs around Portland. So I fully, we, there is a negotiation happening right now with that contract. Um, but the other ones, I don't know where they are in the contracts. I don't know like what we're legally allowed to do in the middle of a contract, for example. So I'd just like to get a little bit more information from our city attorneys, since I don't have a legal background.
Yeah, and I think, you know, all of these recommendations, like the one about traffic safety, we know legally, we can't do that right now. What we're, it's a vision statement about where we should go in the future. Um, so I, I, even if it's like, I agree, you probably can't break that contract. Okay, let's move on. To the gun violence one. We had a discussion about this because of the passage by the city council over, you know, the funding, whether this was even necessary. But people noted that the money passed for the city council is temporary, it's one time money. And so what this calls for is sort of permanent funding and increasing of funding for the Office of Violence Prevention. And this is where we um, talk about sort of why we would want to, to have that, that it's a focus on upstream solutions rather than policing. Okay, any questions about this one or issues? All right.
Could you scroll down a little bit, just so we can read the end?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, any comments on this one? All right, then let's move on to disproportionate policing of black and brown Portlanders, restorative justice programs. Problem and the recommendation. Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Scroll down. And a lot of this, you know, was in the previous document that we all looked at. So we basically just added the problem statement. Traffic safety. Any comments about this one?
Elliot, I have a comment.
Sure.
And I don't see the, the, is there a separate, I can't remember, is there a separate transit safety?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we, we separated it out because um, yeah, people suggested that.
Yeah, so, so I would just say, the, is the paragraph above refer to both of these or only to the traffic? They're separate. Yeah, so I'm suggesting is take the transit safety out on two.
Oh.
Cause it says. But you have it down below, so that's all. Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, so the public transit safety problem. And it turns out that Trimest has a plan to do this. You know, they came up with this whole plan. They still have sixty two transit security officers, which they actually call transit police officers, but Sean suggested that if we called them police, people would be confused. So we're calling them security officers here.
Elliot, are you talking about Trimest Transit Police?
Yeah.
They've now been moved under the Sheriff's Department. Barb and I met him on Saturday. They were on the bus.
They're under the Sheriff's Department?
Over to the Sheriff's Department.
Remember a year ago, Portland pulled out?
Yeah.
Of being in command of it. And I don't know if they have any officers as part of the detail or not. I was going to ask that question.
But. They're not supposed to.
The county, the, the county sheriff is now in charge of the transit police.
So I guess Trimest has sixty two transit security officers, but they're under the, under the Sheriff's Office, Multnomah County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, yes.
On the bus, they explained it to us.
Just to clarify, because there are the transit police, which are not under Trimest, they just work with Trimest. And I do believe Trimest does have some of their own security people, which are basically private security they have hired. And I think we need to clarify which one these sixty two are, because that was the confusion I was trying to avoid here.
Yeah, I mean, if you go to those links, like Trimest Security, it says we have sixty two transit police officers. It doesn't say anything about Multnomah County Sheriff's, so maybe it's a different thing.
Yeah. Well, they, I think that's good to look at because they also have a contract with the county.
Is Mary Claire still here?
No.
I see her.
Yes, I am.
There we go, the expert.
Could you enlighten us?
Uh, Portland Police are no longer responsible for Trimest and
Right.
Our officers don't serve as Trimest officers.
Transit officers.
Transit officers.
Or, yeah, or, yeah, Trimest, yeah.
Okay, let me, I'm going to share the screen where I see. Let's share my desktop.
And just giving you the time, heads up Elliot.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that might be out of date Elliot. Webpages are not current.
Okay, so so how would we figure this out?
It, it was part, sorry.
I was going to suggest we're just going to probably have to contact Trimest and ask them.
Okay.
But how many, what the sixty two are, is that?
Right, I mean, how, what they have as far as who are the transit police, which are not actually Trimest, they belong to the different people and are real police officers. They belong to Multnomah County. I think Gresham might still be involved in the other.
Washington County, it may be Clackamas. I think it's a tri-county effect, isn't it Barb? Or just Multnomah?
I don't have an answer to that right now.
Cause we were in Clackamas County the other day.
It, it's, it's multiple. I used to work for Trimest and I do know that. It's, I mean, there's like Beaverton Police, involved Gresham Police, Multnomah County, Clackamas County, Washington County, maybe Milwaukee Police. I mean, it's.
So Sam, Sam or Asena, could you get that information for us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to our government relations and get that contact, that information. Um, do you still want to keep it if it's outside of PBB's core patrol services? For this document?
I would not. It would make us look foolish. No.
Because it was my understanding that we dissolved the units last year, like around last summer.
It was when the cuts were made to the police bureau in last year's budget.
Yeah.
And the school police same time.
And it dissolved December thirty first.
Thanks.
So it took time to transfer.
So will they not call PBB under any circumstance, or will they're?
No, they, they can still call Portland Police if they need them, but we are not responsible, you know, for the bureau, you know, for the for the agency, nor do we serve as Trimest officers.
So just to clarify, Mary Claire, like if I'm a transit police officer from Gresham, am I still like riding the transit within the bounds of Portland and acting as a transit police officer in that context?
You know, I don't know what the, the Multnomah County Sheriff's Organization is. It used to be that, you know, like you said, officers from all the different jurisdictions, you know, surrounding jurisdictions sent officers to make up Trimest Police Bureau. And then uh, we got out of the business and now the Sheriff's Department is responsible. So I, I really don't know how they're organized, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's figure out more information on this. Um, I think that the, the issue is, in terms of the recommendations, is about the training for those officers and also to have the Trimest police or officers first call the PS3s to try to resolve conflicts rather than the PBB. So I think that that would still be relevant, no matter who.
If it's outside, because the city doesn't control Trimest or the broader thing, I mean, it would basically have to be a recommendation of the city lobbying Trimest to do something.
Read the link that Sam posted. It explains everything about the transfer.
Let's just do a time check here. Let's just do a time check here, I think we had till 7:30, is that right? Did we schedule this for two hours?
Seven.
Oh, till seven?
Originally.
But I had until seven.
Okay, well, we're not gonna, do people have another 15 minutes to make it through? Let's try to go through quickly and see if there are any other issues that come up. Actually, the latter ones are pretty, the, the structural changes to Boex. And maybe what people could do is look at these and, you know, these recommendations are still in their draft form, so in some senses it's still a draft document. So if people could just look at this and send Tajee and I any edits, specific edits or recommendations, then we could make that, make those changes. I think in terms of the survey going out, the survey is, you know, a, a separate thing from this, this document. Does that make sense? Okay, so, um, we will need to get back and do some revisions on the survey. And if you have comments on this document, send them to Tajee or myself and we will, you know, as, as soon as possible, because we'd like to get, it's up on the website now. And so we'd like to get it in as good shape as possible. But I think, you know, this is really helpful to, to get this feedback and I think we'll be continuing to revise these recommendations over the next month. Barb?
Hey Elliot, did you get my email earlier, like right before the meeting?
No, I've been.
Okay, will you look at it, because it had a couple of suggestions that may be null now, but they might not be just.
Okay.
Do you have a next meeting scheduled Elliot?
We don't have a next meeting, and that's a good question, because we're, the feedback from the survey is supposed to be done on the 16th of May. So, um, I guess it would make sense to meet after the 16th rather than before.
Okay.
So that week of the 16th of May.
So that would be the 20th, if you were gonna meet on a Thursday night?
That would be the 20th, right?
Okay.
So why don't we schedule for the 20th, 5:30 to 7:00? And hopefully by that point, we will, I mean, by that point, we'll have the feedback from the community. Now, if the community says, you know, like 90% of the people are against any of these recommendations, then I think we need to like rethink that recommendation, obviously. So this will be helpful to see what people think. In the meantime, if all of you would, through your networks, help to put out the, push out the survey when we have it done. If you have not already, if you're not already on the list, if you could send your email to Claudia, Claudia, do you want to put your email in the chat? And then you could send your email and then we will be able to communicate directly with you about that. We're planning on not updating people about the kind of responses we're getting until the survey is closed. So we will, so we'll, we'll just be letting people know on the map app, like so many people have responded, but we're not gonna give the results until the end, because we don't want to influence people as they're working on filling it out.
Elliot, can I, I'm sorry, can I go over the next steps I have for the minutes to be sure?
Sure.
Asena requested a copy of the recommendations on the ESDs so that she can consult with the city attorney to identify possible legal barriers. Asena agreed to check with government relations to get more clarity on the transit police relationship to PPP. And then just asking people to push out the survey and the next meeting date.
That sounds good, are there any other action items people have?
I have a, I have a question on the survey. So I think one of the things that we learned in the first round was, first round of public comment on Corps Patrol Services, was that the more options people could submit testimony, the better. And so I appreciate PSEP's leadership here to develop the survey, provide a way where people do not have to, you know, share an email or any other personal information to submit testimony. So we have that as an option. When Theo, Claudia and I huddled, we also thought maybe, right, to give people more options, that we could open up the map app again for people who felt comfortable doing so. We could post the draft recommendations you all have worked through, right? So it'd be the final copy of the recommendations. People could submit testimony in the map app. If they choose to, they could also fill out the survey, or they could also email directly to the PSEP email address as well. So we could give those three options for people to submit testimony and weigh in on this draft recommendations. So I wanted to just share, kind of reflect back those three options, see how you all felt about it, see if we have a green light with that approach. And if so, then, then we can work on, we can kind of continue that with, with it, more of that approach going forward.
Sounds good to me, I mean, I think the more ways people could communicate, the better. One, one question that we had is whether it's worth doing another town hall at some point, or is that, and what do people think about that?
Do you want to wait and see where you are Elliot, when you get the feedback to see if a town hall makes sense?
The only issue is, in terms of the timing, we're supposed to bring the recommendations to the PSEP full board meeting, which I believe is on the 25th, is that right? Or is it the 18th?
Yeah, the PSEP full board meeting this month is on the 27th, which is the last Tuesday of the month.
But what for May, what about for May?
Oh yeah, sorry, so the one for May is on the 25th.
Okay, yeah, so if we want to do it the 25th, I just fear that if we wait, you know, it's gonna be too late to have a town hall and make revisions and then get those revisions to the PSEP meeting by the 25th. So I think we would need to do the town hall before we got, close the survey.
I can make a suggestion, you could just make sure in your meeting on the 25th that you have a pretty good segment of time devoted just to the Corps Patrol Services, or to give people time to comment on that if they want to.
That's a great idea, okay. Sean always has a brilliant idea, so we will fix our scheduling problem, that'll be a good section and people can make comments on those things and we will have the feedback by then.
And I'm sorry, I missed the third, Sam, you said three ways to give input, direct emails to the PSEP staff through the map app, and there was a third one, and I'm sorry, I don't.
This survey.
The survey, okay, thank you.
The Google survey.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm with my twin grandsons and they're three and a half and it's hard.
The, the other piece of information, we're in the, still in the process of trying to hire the data analyst who will be looking at the map app stuff. So hopefully that feedback will, will be able to quantify some of that, some of that feedback from the map app. All right.
Quick question, sorry, is, is there some way, so we're talking about the full PSEP meeting in May?
Yeah.
And, and getting, trying to turn people out for that, to get their feedback. And so I, I wonder if someone could suggest, you know, any ideas about making that available? I'm just wondering, Elliot, like, I, I could send something out to, you know, we could, if we had a little invitation or something that then you sent to everybody, and then we could use that to send it out to our networks, you know?
Claudia can make a flyer Joanna, is that okay Elliot?
That's awesome, yeah, I think we should publicize this, this, because that'll be the meeting where PSEP actually votes. And the issue is, the, you know, these recommendations are not like my recommendation or anyone's recommendation, they're the community recommendations, so the community who supports them should be there. So we will do that, I'm sorry for keeping people over, I thought we had two hours. But I'm glad we were able to get through this and thanks for all the great feedback, the editing comments and all, as well as the sort of conceptual questions, I think we are getting closer and we still have time to, to edit this document. So any feedback and clarifications are really helpful at this point. Barb?
I, because my internet is cutting out, is there another meeting on May 20th? Is that what you guys said?
Yeah, so there'll be a meeting May 20th of this sort of work group and that'll be in advance of the full board meeting where we will bring the final recommendations for a vote. On the 25th.
And I do see, I do see some questions, so real quick, the, in terms of distribution. So PSEP will have the draft recommendations and the survey link on the website. We will also post it on the map app, Corps Patrol Services landing page. Folks, gonna put that in the chat as well. And then we will be assisting in communicating this great update, process update to all council offices, the city bureaus who are part of these recommendations, all the neighborhood associations, business districts. We have a list of about 120 community-based organizations that we have sent this out to, that we will send this out to and sent out the first notice to. And the city bureaus also push it through their listservs. And last time, I love Barb signaling the next door. The Portland Police Bureau helped us post this on Nextdoor, on Facebook. We do not use the social media accounts for the mayor on this, just an important point. So if you see silence, just understand that it's a strategic communications move and we want to make sure that PSEP is getting quality feedback from Portlanders on this, on these really important questions. So that's a scan, if anyone has any other recommendations, obviously need everyone, spread the word, word of mouth is the best reference always. But if anyone has any other recommendations to me, please feel free to reach out. Always looking for ways to get the word out in this virtual, more highly virtual environment these days.
And Barb, I think, offered to try to take it, the survey down with an iPad to folks living on the streets and I think that would be amazing if you could do that.
Yeah, I want to double check something really quick, I'm not gonna have a problem if I have 50 surveys coming in from one device, right?
Sam, is it gonna be a problem?
Nope, you'll be fine, we, we actually, we tested that sort of thing the other day, you will be okay. Doing that.
Libraries, is it possible to? Have it done it there, I heard the libraries are opening again, somebody told me, maybe that's just Beaverton.
Yeah, I don't know, but that would be something if they do.
Yeah, that's gonna be in June.
Okay, after.
Elliot, I just wanted to say real quick, looking at the, the month of May, it looks like the 20th is actually the day that the racial equity subcommittee meets.
Oh, shoot.
Then, so I don't know if maybe.
About the 19th?
Yeah, the 19th is free, usually that week is free besides the Thursdays for PSEP.
Okay, let's do it the 19th.
I'm so confused, you guys.
The 25th is a full board meeting, we're talking about the work session prior to the full board. Okay, so work session on 19th, 5:30 to 7:00? And then full board meeting on the 25th where hopefully we'll vote on this stuff. And just so you know, Sam is trying to set up for Tajee and I meetings with the different bureaus so we could run these recommendations by them and see if they tell us, like, we got our information wrong or whatever. So thank you everyone, sorry for keeping you late. And we will reconvene in about a month, or see you sooner at other meetings. Take care.